Okay, good evening. It is 6:33. I'm a few minutes tardy, I apologize for that. We're going to call tonight's Planning Commission meeting to order of December 3rd. And let's start with roll call. On my right, please.
Senator Collins?
Frank Blau, if you might just take one second and say something. My father passed away today, and it wasn't, it was not unexpected, but he was the reason I actually got involved in politics and got involved in being involved with the city. And so I would just kind of like to have a nice public shout-out to my father for this evening, so, thank you.
Sorry to hear that. Ryan Coleman.
Philip Cherry and Larry Crandall.
And we did get news that Commissioner Brooks would be missing tonight, so his absence is excused. Has everyone had a chance to look over the agenda? There was one change made between the agenda that went out last week to tonight's. We do not have meeting minutes from the 19th. Other than that, it's pretty much the same as what we saw.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have agenda for tonight, which brings us to our first public comment period. This is a non-agenda public comment period. I will also, or at least would like to clarify, we are having a public hearing on old business, non-residential uses in residential zones. So we'll get to that program in a minute. We also have another section of old business, a work session on dimensional standards, and we will take public comment on that specific piece at that time. So again, this is a non-agenda public comment period. If you'd like to, please come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and we will give you three minutes to entertain us.
Since no one will come to the podium, Romero Valderrama, Northeast 18th Street, Sonambish, Washington. First of all, I wanted to thank you all for all the time that you've put in as planning commissioners, and especially the work that you've been putting in lately, the late hours on the comp plan, the tree ordinance, and now on the non-residential uses for adult homes, churches, and schools here that are critical to our city. I had mentioned yesterday, in my role as a city council member, or I should say, on Tuesday night, that I'm very grateful for all the work that you do, and I'm hopeful that the city will start to take more advantage of all of our commissions here, particularly in the plannings and the parks commissions, as you've been looking at the public work standards and looking at the urban forestry management plan coming up. It's a real opportunity for our citizens to step back and do a vision of what we would like to see in our city, instead of doing business as usual. And frankly, I think that you're the ones that are more empowered as the voice of the people to do that, and I welcome that as a citizen, and welcome that from all the roles of our city, to be able to see that you guys try to take that exercise. I, from my different roles as citizen and council member, will be encouraging the council to help with that, because you guys have a tremendous wealth, as you've shown, of experience and talent, and I think our city desperately needs it. We only have 2.5 percent of our city that's not platted and developed, and so we need to sit back, say, what kind of tree city do we want to become in the urban forestry? What kind of streets do we want? Do we want a canopies, a touch, as others, one-side parking? There's a lot that can be done, and we can sit back. And frankly, I think you are the ones who have put the time in and have the best sense of it with the contact to the people. So, thank you again, and if I don't see you before, I wish you all a happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Romero. Any others wishing to provide public comment on anything that's not on our agenda? All right, seeing none others, I will close our public comment period at this time, which brings us to our director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening.
Welcome back.
It's like, oh, thank you, appreciate that. Similar to Councilmember Valderrama just a few minutes ago, he touched on probably about eight of the things I was going to touch on, so my director's report just got a couple minutes shorter. Yeah, you did. But I just wanted to, in a similar vein, thank you for your great work this year. I've been here coming up on 18 months now, and it's been certainly a very busy 18 months, dating back to mid-2014 with being in the throes of the comp plan update, and then, of course, as previously mentioned, the work on trees, public work standards, and then the items that you're working on currently. You know, I've worked with a lot of planning commissions in my career, and the group, two groups now, the group in 2014, and of course, we had a few changes this year here in 2015, but they've certainly been two of the better commissions that I've worked with in my nearly 20 years now in doing this. And so, from a staff perspective, we're extremely appreciative of that, and the leadership with Chair Coleman and Vice Chair Blau has been outstanding, so good leadership to work with, good communication between staff and the commission, and it's been good. So, we are going to have a very busy 2016, among other things. As mentioned, the urban forestry management plan, and we've got a number of other items on our work program that we'll be working with the city manager, and of course, the city council at their retreat in January to affirm, and we'll get started on that. So, the last thing I was going to mention real quick, on Monday next week, December 7th, the city is having their volunteer appreciation dinner. I believe it starts at around 6:00, 6:00 PM, here, here in, yep, here in council chambers. So, hopefully, all of you will be able to make it out for that. It's a fun event, and of course, I think it culminates with the volunteer of the year award, so you never know who got nominated. With that, I think that's all I have. If you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer anything that you may have. Otherwise, I'm going to turn it over to Evan and Robin, and they're going to take you through the rest of the evening, so.
Any questions?
Just the way I like it, perfect. No questions.
I were your favorite, right? Thank you.
All right, thanks. Have a good evening.
Okay, that concludes the director's report. This brings us to our first topic under old business, non-residential uses in residential zones. Evan, Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is an introduction to your public hearing on what we were calling non-residential uses in residential zones. Given the comment we had last time, a more descriptive name really is land use compatibility in residential zones, since some of the uses we were talking about were indeed residential, so a little name change there. To recap our work so far on this topic, we began in October, had a couple of work sessions where you've given us policy direction, and we've refined that somewhat. And tonight is our public hearing. We'll take comment from the public and on the draft materials that are in your packet, and we'll use that to help develop your recommendation to the city council. Two goals for tonight, which are to review the packet materials and to hold your public hearing. So then the packet, there are responses to questions that commissioners had from our last meeting. Won't go through them in detail, but were there any remaining questions or follow-up questions on what was provided? I'll do my best to follow up if there are.
Questions or comments from commissioners? No? Okay.
Also in the packet are revised policy evaluation forms. So we've taken the forms that we discussed at our last meeting and have combined some, changed, refined some of the policies based on your discussion, and so those have been repackaged and included in your packet for this session. And lastly, some draft code. We've started to articulate some of the policy ideas that you've given us and use that as a starting point for your hearing. So, this, I'll hand it over to you. So this is your opportunity to take public comment on the materials that we've included in your packet, and also, once you've closed the public hearing, I'd like to get any final thoughts or any additional questions you may have that's been sparked by the discussion, so that I can follow up on those and have them ready for your deliberations in January. So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. As Robin pointed out, we are having a public hearing. In just a couple of minutes, I will open that up. So, again, tonight is really just to, we'll be taking public comment, asking staff any clarifying questions or comments that maybe we would like to have addressed on the policy forums, but we're going to really kind of hold detailed discussion and deliberation until they bring any additional material that we may need back to us. And that is tentatively scheduled for 14th of January, yeah.
Yes.
So, all right, let me just go over a couple of public hearing, you know.
I had one, oh, one statement, because the word "vision" came up a couple times, and I was looking at the policy evaluation form number one and waste container screening. I think, I understand what vision of the future is, but we're actually looking at visual right now. This is going to happen. This is a visual look of what we're recommending, or might be recommended for the city. So, I just liked the two words together, vision and visual, so, that's all.
Okay. Thanks, Larry. All right, so, just go over a couple of things that we normally have for our public hearings. You do get seven minutes. Again, we ask you to come up to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and provide us with any comments. If you are getting near the end of that seven minutes, we'll ask you to try and summarize this so that we can have your comments noted in the record. And at the end of that, we will close the public hearing and then continue discussion with staff. So, public hearing is open. We did have a sign-up sheet. You didn't have to sign up, but if you would still like to provide comment.
My name is Paul Stickney. I'm at 504-228 AV, Southeast. My, my comment this evening is, I'd like to thank staff for changing the term this evening to land use compatibility in residential zones. My concern is that I haven't yet seen that online, on the city's website, or on the, and you guys know I stutter on peas, I'm not nervous, it's just me, on the Planning Commission page, for the last couple weeks, it said "non-residential uses." So, in essence, no one in the general public would be aware that there is the regulation for all single-family homes in regards to the dark skies and the trashcans and the off-street parking. So, as of last week, I thought of something that I did not say a couple weeks ago, because I hadn't thought of it. So, when it was found out that, that single-family homes have to be regulated along with daycares, you can't separate them, was there any discussion with city council or council management about which way should that go? Should it include all 17,000 houses along with the few hundred non-residential uses, or should that not be considered to be regulated at this time? So, my question is, if there are going to be dark skies, light fixtures, off-street trashcan screening, and off-street parking applied to all single-family homes, I think that should just be made more broadly disseminated and clearer, both online and in the, in the notice of public hearing that was published, it's not mentioned about single-family homes. But I do and am happy that it got changed this evening. So, I'm more asking for either one of two things. Either take it off the single-family homes, or make sure that's really made aware and everybody out there knows that there are these regulations coming for all single-family homes. And that's my comment. Appreciate it.
Okay. Good point, Paul. Thank you. Evan, would you like to provide a?
Chair, would you like me to respond to the public comment, maybe when the hearings close?
I would appreciate a brief response.
Should I wait till the hearings close, Chair?
Um, no, just go ahead and.
The, so I appreciate Mr. Stickney's point, and certainly, our intent is to change the terminology in the documentation moving forward. That was represented in the packet material tonight. I appreciate the comment about the website. We'll do a quick scrub of the website, make sure we update our terminology there as well. I don't speak for the city council, as you, as you are well aware of, and I'm very aware of, with the council member in the room. But I do recall that in that council discussion, when they set the scope for the, for the Planning Commission, we did, as staff, share with the planning, or pardon me, with the city council, that when we're looking at regulating certain types of group homes, group homes, we need to be conscious of some of the federal regulations around regulating them differently than single-family homes. And this came up, at my recollection, really around the issue of waste collection and lighting. So my perception is that the city council was at least aware that the Planning Commission might go down this route when they began their, their recommendation that the Planning Commission take up this particular set of questions. As far as broadly disseminating this information, maybe beyond what we would do with our standard public hearing notice protocols, the city does have a city newsletter. We could certainly perhaps put a little article in the newsletter to make this more clear. I can tell you that our intent moving forward is to make this a much more clear, transparent goal. I thought your comments actually at our last meeting were very, very spot-on, that we had characterized this one way, and it no longer was that way. So that, that's the staff's intent. I'll remind the Planning Commission, you do have the ability to make an accompanying recommendation with your, not specific to the code, but to the city council about public outreach. So if you want to have that extra degree of certainty that the city council hears what the Planning Commission would recommend in this regard, we can accommodate that as well.
All right, thank you, Evan. Yeah, the one thought that occurred to me was, I like the, I like the updated title, land use compatibility, but in the interest of not trying to confuse or, you know, pull a, the wool over somebody's eyes, so to say, maybe, maybe we keep as a formerly-known-as, like an alias, you know, non-residential, AKA.
A parenthetical reference, yeah. We can do that, too.
Frankie uses. Okay, thank you for that. I just want to make sure if there are any other audience members that wish to provide comment on this topic.
I'd love to ask a question.
Yeah, would appreciate if you would come up here, if you could. We can, we can address it better. Don't be scared.
I still need to state my name and all that stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm Pete Blum. I'm the business director at East Ridge Church, Port Ruffa, Vista Quahog, Falls City Railroad. We're still about ready to be annexed into the city. So I'm responding to an email that I got, and I, I can't remember which planner I talked to here when we were, we had an open discussion on, on the Kohani annexation. And so I, I'm just part of these emails that come. So when I got this email about tonight discussing, I don't know the issues at hand, but they identified four concerns, storage and screening of waste containers, outdoor lighting, parking lot and loading areas, and location of high-traffic generating uses, all of which, you know, I'm, we practice, we do try to be a good neighbor, and we're in a very high-traffic area. We hire at our own expense, you know, King County deputies to, for traffic control. I guess I just need to know, because I have no, I tried to find the, this packet that you're referring to. I couldn't find it anywhere to know what the issues were, I'm sorry. So I, my question was, is there a packet available that I can grab? Is that the one that was out here? Okay. I didn't see anything in there that, that talked about concerns that a church like ours should be aware of. Are we, is, what are the concerns that you can provide for, for me that we should be aware of as it applies to our church? That was more of a question. I just don't, I just don't see the, the issues at hand, I, I just, as clear to me as I'd like them to be.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for coming.
Thanks.
It tells us that staff has made some efforts in outreach.
I apologize, I just didn't know.
Chair, if I could suggest, I'm happy to follow up with Mr. Blum after this conversation tonight, and certainly kind of give him some background and scope on, on our exercise, and solicit more comment for either the Planning Commission's consideration or city council.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's appropriate, Evan. Thank you for doing that. We did also receive a couple of, we received one email and another, another comment from Debbie. I do, I do want to, maybe, maybe I'll just talk about them sort of generally. As we opened up our public hearing this evening, we talked about providing name and address, and we did receive one anonymous comment, and I'm not sure why that sender decided that was necessary, but so be it. You know, we've received it, maybe some of you have read it. And what concerned me more about that comment was that it seemed to be targeted towards a specific use and a specific user. And I just want to caution the, the commission to maybe take the content of that comment more generally, and less, as narrowly focused as that was. I thought there, there were, there was some information in there that was helpful, but it was a little alarming to me, the way it was constructed. Are there any, any questions from the commission?
Yeah, I would say to the people, have a right to submit comments anonymously, and we will generally read them, but the purpose of a public hearing is to identify yourself and to, you know, make a comment as a part of the public, and if it's anonymous, it's kind of hard to give it, you know, grievance.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a grievance of some sort, and I'm like, okay, but, you know, there's other avenues for that, so, just my two cents on it. They usually tend to be really long when they're anonymous, too. I don't know why, no one sends short anonymous notes, you know? It's usually like, anonymous says.
All right. Okay. Withholding any further audience members coming to the podium, I'm going to close tonight's public hearing. And the hearing is closed at 6:56. So given that, we, we got a little bit of feedback. As I mentioned, we do have a couple of letters. Is there, oh, let's do this. Are there any comments on the updated evaluation forms?
I have a few. Are we going to go through each one? Or do you want to just?
Well, I wasn't.
We don't have to.
Going to specifically, do you, I mean, we can just, how about we just start on the right, and we can kind of take comments one by one and, and go from there.
Okay. My first one has to do with the waste containers, or I guess it's the waste disposal on Form 1. And I just didn't see that there's a volume that we've identified yet, and so I was wondering how we'd handle that. Because I didn't think it would be applied to all residences, only residences with a larger volume of trash.
I see. Is there a volume that you'd like to identify, or was the idea that the screen would apply over, like, over a certain size?
Right. I think, isn't that what you guys thought we were doing?
Well, yeah. So, that was one of the questions that was responded to in, in the cover memo.
That was just what Republic provides, but it doesn't speak to a certain volume.
Well, it, it does. So on the, the cover memo, it says, "The city's solid waste management providers offer cart-size options from 32 to 96 gallons." And maybe, maybe the discussion was a little bit vague last time, but at least, my intent there was not that screening trash receptacles that are cumulatively, let's say it's four 96-gallon containers, you know, so if you have four of these containers that are up to 96 gallons, screening's not required. But if you've got some volume that's in excess of that, whether it's one container or more containers, I think that was kind of the threshold that we were thinking about, and so I, at least personally, I was thinking, well, so what's the difference between four 96-gallon containers and sort of one of the smaller dumpsters? You know, I, I don't know if the smallest size is like a two-cubic yard or five-cubic yard, but I'm trying to find some equitable threshold between any waste management container, you know, solid waste container, or combination.
So is, I'm hearing, like, if the impact, or there's a, the visual impact of a certain number or size of containers is over a certain amount, then this is when you would think the screening or the, keeping them not visible from the street would be appropriate? Okay.
Yeah, and at least I was.
That's what I, that's what I'm talking about, a threshold.
Yeah, yeah, and rather than looking at a number of containers, I guess I was trying to come, come up with what's a cumulative threshold. I don't know what that is yet.
Chair, can you clarify what you mean by cumulative? I think what Commissioner Collins is trying to say is, where do we draw the line?
Right.
So for instance, an example, let's say, and I don't know, because I don't feel like doing the math right now.
We're hypothesizing.
Yeah. You know, four 96-gallon containers is equivalent to four cubic yards of solid waste storage.
Okay.
Okay. To me, those four containers, well, maybe a little bit excessive, but to me, doesn't really trigger or rise to a need to screen it. Now, when you get to five cubic yards, that could be five of those containers, or it could be a single five-cubic-yard dumpster container. That, to me, is now, you know, now we've got a metric threshold that's applicable to all users, regardless of what kind of container that they're using, that now they have to screen it. Does that make sense? But I don't know if five cubic yards is the right number, or if it's, needs to be something else.
Why don't we have it be the smallest dumpster that you could order? Say that's a three or four yard, I'm not quite sure what that is. Usually, I think it's a two or three yard dumpster, and so say, because you don't want to have an un-screened dumpster. So we could start with that, and then that equivalent in containers would be the same? I don't know.
Also, isn't there a threshold, even like a consumer, they have four of these, and wouldn't Waste Management or the, the, yeah, the solid, the provider, wouldn't they have a conversation with them and say, hey, you're using four, it's, it's about time you guys sized up to step it up? Because you have, you have extra ways. So, isn't there some kind of, like, threshold that they themselves have? Hey, you actually qualify for this? And wouldn't be, wouldn't it be easier for us to piggyback off of that, versus us, you know?
Trying to figure something out.
Right. Four, four 96 gallons is equal to this. Instead, why don't we just talk to them and ask them?
Yeah, we actually, I believe that there was a conversation at one point, and I think someone said, it might even have been you, that, you know, we need to talk to the trash people. How do they rank, you know?
Frank, you know me, I'm a trash talker.
You're a trash talker, I know. And I will say again, my dad would be so proud of me tonight talking about trashcans. But there must be some language that they use in their evaluation of, you know, properties for how much they bill them for, that says, you're this scale, you're this scale, let's use what they use. And I don't know what it is, but let's at least find out what it is. You know, that might give us some thresholds that we can easily apply, as opposed to something that's like, oh, that's not how we rank garbage, you know, so.
Maybe we don't have to identify the threshold tonight, but we might want to say that there is going to be a threshold, because the way it reads right now is that every single, every single house is going to be required to have an enclosure or screening for garbage and waste containers, and I don't think that was our intent.
That's correct.
Okay. So it's, so there'll be some kind of minimum threshold in volume, terms of volume, and it could be their containers or their small-sized dumpster, but over that limit, then? then I'm hearing you want to be screened or to have containers not visible from the street? Is that right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Good.
Excuse me. I was looking at the municipal code and what we said. So going back, it says, "Properties that produce a large volume of garbage or recyclable visible from the street or adjacent property." Is that the issue that we just discussed? Because I thought the intent was that every resident is supposed to not have garbage visible, except eventually there would be a codification of so many hours, 8:00 AM or 8:00 PM the night before through 5:00 PM the next day. And I didn't see that in here, but again, we need to treat all residents the same. And I was worried about putting the threshold on it, because the intent is not how much garbage you produce, but that all garbage containers are screened, or they're not visible from the street.
No, it actually was both. That we wanted to ensure that users that need to accommodate a large volume of waste are screening whatever storage container they are using, are screening it appropriately, and once it's out, whatever number of containers or whatever, is only out for 24 hours. And that, so the form doesn't reflect that time period, but the proposed code, which is a little bit further back, it's like about five pages from the end. Keep going.
Chair, can I ask a quick clarifying question? This was actually something I think the staff struggled with a teeny bit in drafting the regulations. What I'm hearing you say tonight is, the 24 hours, I think I'm hearing consensus, you want to have and available for deliberation. I'm sensing you also want to have some kind of proposed threshold that would require the regulation, or it could be applied generally, and that's really probably part of your deliberations that you want to conduct on the 14th. Is that an accurate statement?
Yeah. A threshold that would.
So we'll have both options.
A threshold that would require screening.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other, since we're on waste containers, are there any other concerns about the form or the, well, let's just kind of stick with the form at this point.
Actually, I did have a question. One of my comments previously was, and I'm assuming, I don't want to assume here, but I am, that if you go to the actual code language, it says, "Residents shall return garbage, recycling, and other refuse containers to their designation, storage, location within 24 hours after collection or as soon as it is feasible, as soon as it's feasible." I'm assuming that this portion, this last sentence is what we talked about last time where it's, "I leave town on Wednesday evening for Thanksgiving, Friday's my collection day, so it's been there all day Thursday, it's collected on Friday, I'm not back until Sunday, and that's okay."
Correct.
Is that the intent?
Yeah, to have that flexibility when there's really valid reasons for maybe having a container up for more than 24 hours.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, let's move on to Form number two. And this was related to outdoor lighting, light trespass, impacts on neighbors.
Only one comment I had on this one was to make, just make it more specific, that this requirement would apply to new construction in the beginning. I mean, you've already said that we would provide a timeline for the fixtures to come into conformance, but maybe require outdoor lighting fixtures in new constructions to dot, 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 dot.
And where does that language about compliance over time live?
I was going to ask the same thing.
I.
I don't see it in here, so I'm just.
Go to the code.
It's in the draft.
Code, okay.
The code, let me quickly find it.
And while you're looking for that, Robin, is this, is this mostly a borrow, beg and steal from the town center?
Parts of it are, yes, you know, to be consistent. And the Commissioner, you were talking about the timing, it's in the first section here and under applicability. The idea being that the lighting would apply to new construction, so new lighting, so anything that's replaced, or at any point 10 years from the time of adoption. I just threw in 2027, figuring it would be adopted sometime next year, so. And coincidentally, I guess 10 years is a common period of time for regulations like these to be phased in, because that tends to be the lifespan for a lot of light fixtures or light bulbs, so it was very fortuitous it worked out, so.
Okay. Good.
Again, my comment about vision and visual. This is like the screening the garbage, the lights applies to our visual senses, and is it a vision in the future of how the citizens of Smamish want to see or envision Smamish to be here, we're actually putting some things into practice.
Anything else on lighting? All right. Good with Form number two. Form number three is parking, off-street parking requirements.
I'll start. I thought it would be good in the recommendation to say, "Do not recommend" because, maybe we could state a reason. I know City Council is looking to why we are doing or not doing something, and it would be nice to say something like, because we don't see that the parking problem is significant, or I can't remember, we came up with a few things at the last meeting.
It gets captured, so yes, I can add that statement.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's captured in the negatives, actually, pretty much there.
That's true.
Yeah, but I think it's reasonable to call it out, too. All right. Okay, good. Thank you. So this is new Form 4, revised and consolidated from a number of other forms, related specifically to SEPA thresholds, State Environmental Policy Act. Policy, right? Yeah. Does continue on to the second page beyond that, so. You got any comments on these two pages?
And Chair, just to clarify, it also relates to the parking lot design discussion that I think you had beyond just the SEPA, but the parking lot design itself, too, landscaping and lighting and the like there. Right.
We have lowered the SEPA exemption threshold from the current 40 car parking spaces to a lower number, and that lower number we landed on was what, was it 30 or?
I think I dropped it back down to the lowest number you could propose, which is 20.
20, okay.
And I don't know that there's a magic reason why I picked 20, other than I went from one end to the other end of that spectrum.
What about the locating on arterials? The required new uses that will generate more trips to locate on arterials? Didn't we decide we couldn't do that for churches and something? I thought that was one of your points, Frank.
Yeah, it's difficult to enforcement that from a constitutional standpoint, it's getting a little bit challenging, in my humble opinion.
But we did talk about encouraging.
TDM.
New users to incorporate TDM to the extent that they could.
So the draft regulation in front of you, and I think it's, I apologize, the page numbers fell off the draft code, which they'll be back on by January 14th, I can tell you. That drives me nuts. But it's the second to last page of your draft code, where we talk about these uses more specifically. And I think it's proposed Section 21A30, 240, subsection 2, where we talk about location. And I did draft this in. I put it in as an option for the Plan Commission to consider in your deliberations. I am talking with the city attorney right now, or we are talking with the city attorney right now, to make sure that is something that we think is okay to do. If it's not, I'll relay that to you before you make your final recommendation, so you have full information.
I'd appreciate getting that called out, because it kind of, it's just kind of sitting in there, and I'm not sure we are agreed on the usage of it, and even some of the terminology in it, located with direct access to a neighborhood collector, you know, that's kind of, to me, I want to know a little bit more about what that means, and I think we already went down that road, too, so.
I'm not real crazy about it.
If it's all right, I'll prompt that conversation on January 14th for your discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Please do, thank you.
I had a question on, can we talk about the berm?
Yeah.
And you put it in two places. Looking at the regulation, and I'll just summarize it, it says, "No less than three feet." And I kept looking for the other shoe. Is there a height limitation on it?
On berms?
Yes.
No, actually, and perhaps the Plan Commission would like to consider one. This was one of the questions I think we looked into related to crime prevention through environmental design. And I think that was one of the items I think we reported back to you on. I never heard an upper limit to that berm out of that discussion, so it's easy to add in. Having said that, I have certainly seen berms that are over my head, and I'm close to six feet, but I'm not actually six feet tall. I'll just point out. So, close, average for an adult American male. So I don't know if we want to go down that road, so to speak, that far into the regulatory requirement and be that specific or not. There are probably situations where a taller berm would provide increased compatibility, but we possibly have some SEPTED crime prevention through environmental design considerations to have there as well. Do you want me to prompt this conversation a little bit further on your January 14th meeting? And?
I think it makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah. Safety is what we're really looking at, and that's, it just surprised me when I didn't see it there.
Evan, why would anyone need a berm that was that high? What would be some, the three, the lower threshold makes total sense, light pollution, all that good stuff. Why would anyone need such a high berm?
The ones I can think of tend to be for privacy, more than anything else, for passing traffic, especially when you have a somewhat hilly area, as we do in Smamish, and you perhaps are descending a hill and you want to prevent people looking in a window of some sort.
Okay, and I can also see sound decimals same time. So thank you for that insight. Okay.
Though that, as I understand, can be achieved through a solid wood fence to some extent, so.
But this, so privacy, but this is specific to parking lots, right?
This is specific to non-residential uses in parking lots, yes. This particular berm. And that's why we set the minimum threshold, of course, to block headlights coming out of the parking lots at three feet.
Okay. So you're envisioning a scenario, when you're talking about privacy, you're talking about there's a set of houses that are in front of a parking lot, and the houses want privacy from cars that are possibly in the parking lot.
And, you know, I think it's, in my experience, it's fair to say that the religious community is very sensitive to their neighbors. And so I could envision at least a hypothetical situation where a religious community or the neighborhood would like to see a berm that would provide that extra shielding or barrier between their parking lot use and the house next door. I don't know if we want to mandate that, and there are maybe safety concerns on the other end.
Right.
Well, I was just thinking about a situation, not related to a religious use, but let's say, Lake Washington School District wants to locate a, you know, a motor pool facility up here for their buses. And now you've got buses that are going to start warming up at 6:30 in the morning, and they're kind of loud, you know? You might want to encourage that kind of use to have a slightly higher berm to mitigate the noise.
Yeah, and I'd echo that comment, Chair. Actually, a few years ago, we managed the bus base review for the Iskwa School District, just south of Pinalik Middle School, and they did end up putting in a fairly large sound barrier wall, quite a bit higher than six feet.
So I would encourage everyone to kind of think that through. I think those are good points. And we will be prompted to consider that again here in a few weeks or so. Any other general comments on the form? This is the last one, Form 5, daycares, and the potential for increased traffic.
Just, again, we talked last time, if I recall, again, this is safety, safety for, in a general concept, and I think that's great.
The actual wording, though, is considerably more specific than the form.
The wording of.
Of the proposed, allow access to the entrance of the daycare without crossing a street or travelway, and be located off-street, i.e. not within a public right-of-way or access easement. I don't have any problem with that, just it's a lot more specific than just saying requiring safe space, so.
The form is more sort of like a policy direction.
Yeah.
We can revise the form to be more clear and better in alignment with what your discussion was at our last meeting.
Because of the two specific things we're asking for, and I think I wanted to be clear that we thought about them, we talked about those specific things also, not just the general, not just the general concept of safety, because we did have a discussion about, well, does it need to be a turnaround, for example? And I think the general consensus was no, it doesn't need to be a turnaround, but it does need to be safe. And these are two ways in which we are saying, safety is achieved.
Does the draft code accurately capture your intention from our last meeting?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, I'll revise the form and make sure it's in alignment.
Robin, I have a question. So code, it's 16B, be located off-street, that is not within a public right-of-way or access easement. Does that, does that rule out parking right in front of the residence?
If the parking is in an access easement or a street, the idea was to not block the travelway, to address the concern about there being congestion in front of daycares, and so it depends on the location of the parking, I guess, is the answer to your question.
It can't be on a sidewalk, right? On this, the way this is reads? Because that's the right of, public right-of-way.
Generally, yeah, generally. Sometimes improvements are a little bit different from where the right-of-way is, but yes, the idea is.
Wouldn't unload a child onto the sidewalk if the child was on that side of the car? I don't know, how would that work out?
So let me give you an example. The daycare that my kids went to, typical, single-family home, Klahani, we would park in front of the house, and I would go, get out of the car, go to the sidewalk side of the car, pull both kids out that way.
You'd pull them out?
As, or, yes, sometimes I'd have to pull them out, and some days, they would just voluntarily come out. Still happens. So does this code prevent that scenario from happening? Because all the families that I've talked to, and parents I've seen dropping kids off at private in-home daycares, they encounter this kind of a scenario. Or I hope that they go to the sidewalk side and have their kids exit that way, but does this code prevent that from happening?
The code wouldn't stop you from any certain behavior, but it's merely asking for daycares to have an off-street area for loading and unloading. So it, just asking for space to be available for you to, say, pull into a driveway, or a loop, you know, a turnaround, or something else besides being in the street.
But most private homes don't have. But most private homes don't have that facility or that ability.
The driveway?
Well, they may have a driveway, but they, they may not have the ability to, well, if they're excluded from doing what I just described, I don't think very many homes have.
Well, I think the concept was that, you know, you could get one, or maybe even two cars, two vehicles, dropping children off, passengers, whatever, pull into the driveway off of the street, unload their passengers, and then pull out of the driveway and move along, and one or two more cars could pull into the driveway. And so you're, you're removing the congestion from the, from the street, you're removing the safety concern of kids trying to cross the street, or getting out of the car in the street, and removing that conflict.
I, I see your point, but I, I was actually, when, when that happened, I was always worried that a parent who was backing out of the driveway would not see other kids, and kids have this darn tendency to run, you know, oddly enough. That was always my fear, that a parent who would pull into the driveway, take, drop their kids off, and back out, because typically people are in a hurry to get to work, I thought that that was a greater safety hazard than just pulling up right, you know, right in front of the house and, you know, getting the kids to get, exit out the sidewalk side.
So the terminology that kind of vexes that is where it says right-of-way, right?
Right.
And I don't know if there's something we can craft around that to make that an acceptable use of the right-of-way that doesn't have unintended consequences. I don't know, but we should think about it.
Should I, or should there perhaps be more options for your deliberations in January, where we can continue this and better refine?
Well, before, before we get into the specific words of the code, I'm more concerned that the policy option that we've been considering hasn't been fully thought through. You know, so the amendment option says requires, requires safe space off-street where cars can stop for pickup and drop-off. I mean, that, that was the, the initial thinking. Now, if there's concern about that, then I think we need to think of a different policy direction.
If you removed off-street, because yours isn't on-street usage, you know, if you removed on-street, off-street from that, and then listed several acceptable scenarios, including being able to drop off at curb side, as long as the children exit on the curb side of the vehicle, I don't know how you enforce that, kids, you know, I've seen them come out the other door sometimes at the bus stop. So we need to talk about what some of those scenarios are, but I don't think it's right to exclude it as a safe option also. So I'm kind of with Commissioner Charing on that. I'd like to see something that's a little bit easier to understand, what it is we allow and what it is we don't allow, even if we have to come up with some diagrams. You know, if this is acceptable, this is not. I think his point about the cars backing up also, that's a safe, a huge safety consideration that should be diagrammed as to what we mean when we mean, when we say pull into the driveway and drop off, you know?
Can I ask a clarifying question, perhaps? I, I want to make sure that the commission's registered something Robin said a moment ago, which is that this is requiring that the daycare provide the off-street parking spot. It's not preventing daycare users from using the street parking that we incorporate into many of our street designs already. So if we're thinking of the in-home daycare, the designated off-street parking spot might be in the driveway, as, as the commission has just discussed. It will be available for parents to use. It's not mandated that the parents use it. They could drop off at the sidewalk. And, and I would discourage, honestly, in our land use regulation, we probably don't want to get into which side of the car the children really exit from. That's, that's probably too far for us to go this time. But we can make that more explicit in the, the policy option or the code language. I would also echo something I think Commissioner Coleman said a moment ago. The, the policy option we've been pursuing so far that we've tried to put into code for you to deliberate on the 14th is to provide that safe off-street parking space. If, if the commission doesn't think that's actually where we should go, that, to me, that's part of your deliberation discussion. If there's code language or additional information, Commissioner Blaus' point that we can provide you, I want to make sure that we hear and get it. And I, I heard the comment on diagrams, we can do that. Is there other optional code that we need to draft for you?
Well, so, my point specifically, Evan, that the last thing I said was, right now, the policy direction is safe space off-street. Now, if we think it's okay for that drop-off and pickup, unloading, loading area to occur on the street, we need to change this option, because it's not accurately reflecting what the intention of this commission may be. So that was, that was my last comment. So I think, I feel like we need to address that first, and then we can get into some of the code specifics. Yes?
Yes.
What?
Yes, I agree with you.
Okay. Are there any other comments or concerns about amending the option to allow on-street loading?
Well, the only thing is, if that's what everybody's doing now, what's the point in making any sort of policy change? I mean, except for, like, Evan, your point about that's just the option that you have a space on the driveway, maybe that's enough. But if everybody's doing this already, what, what are we changing? I don't know.
And I, I agree with, and again, I did hear what Robin said, because I had to read it twice, but when we go down, it says it must, there must be space located, but we're talking about what the institution needs to do. The education of parent and child safety, possibly another issue that we, that would be an awful long code to draft out. So I, I kind of like it, because we are saying, provide space off-street, and that's good.
So I'm hearing either off-street space or on-street adjacent to the daycare?
Something like that, yeah.
I think, I think that's a fair compromise.
Okay. Again, you can deliberate and refine and...
Maybe sort of a hierarchy. As staff is considering additional code language, I think one of the things this commission might consider is the location of that on-street space, and we've already, we've already identified that we don't want children having to cross the street. So I think that kind of, that kind of draws it pretty, pretty plainly where that's going to be.
Is that covered in our code somewhere else there, like traffic code or something like that? Like you, when you exit a vehicle, you don't exit on the street side and run across the street? I mean, isn't there jaywalking? Isn't there some other mechanism we already have in place for two, for regulations around that, that we're not, kind of just, don't need to step all over, it seems like?
Well, I think the federal code does say that you must have a safe loading space at these daycare centers in order to be certified, so.
All right. So, do you feel like you've got some, somewhat made direction from us?
We'll have something for you on, on January, so.
All right. Anything else on traffic for daycares loading and unloading? Okay, we will pick this up then in a few weeks. That concludes our discussion on, what are we calling this now? Land use compatibility in residential zones, unless there's anything else from staff?
Nope.
Hearing none? Let's move on to dimensional standards for single-family homes.
Take a five-minute break.
Oh, yeah, let's, there's been a request for a five-minute break, because we may have some things to chew through on this, so let's take five at 7:32, be back at 7:37, like a Boeing.
Of course, we're here tonight for our second item on the agenda. We're looking at our dimensional standards for single-family homes. This was an item I introduced to you back on November 5th. I've put together essentially four evaluation forms based upon our conversation on November 5th. What I've set up for tonight is primarily a work session. I want to make sure that we're clear as to what type of dimensional standard we might be adopting. Looking forward, of course, we have our public hearing scheduled for January 14th. It's the same night you're planning on doing your deliberations for the subject we just finished, and then we'll finish out this conversation hopefully by the end of January, January 21st. So goal for tonight, I want to make sure that we're all clear. I have some graphics here that I'd like to run through with the planning commission in the PowerPoint. I'd like to review the evaluation forums with you. Same basic three questions that we asked for the, the compatibility issues we were talking about a moment ago. Did we get the analysis correct in our evaluation forums? Do we have any options that we want to refine further? And then identifying, hopefully, an option for us to move forward for our public hearing in January. So the first standard, so this is correlating to Form, I think I called it Form A in your packet. This is the impervious surface standard for dimensional standards. This is focused primarily on the R4 and R6 zone. And what you'll see in front of you tonight is just a hypothetical 6,000-square-foot lot, which is a fairly common lot size in an R4, R6 zone. These specific examples are intended to be for the R4 zoning designation. If you're interested, I can explain what difference you might see if we looked at this for R6. These are illustrative. So, under our current impervious surface threshold, we would look at a maximum impervious surface on a site like this of approximately 70% of the site area. Impervious surface would include all of the colored shapes on this aerial view, the house, the driveway, the patio, the shed. Those would all count towards that impervious surface. The current regulation for the R4 zone would allow for a 70%, 70% impervious surface area for a 6,000-square-foot lot, that's 4,200 square feet. I think I provided another version of this example in the evaluation form itself. The evaluation form considers an option that would look at reducing the impervious surface allowed on an R4-zoned lot. Here, what I've shown is actually the 40% of the site area. What I think you'll see in terms of an actual effect on the ground is frankly a reduction in all of the things that count as impervious surface. So these would include your driveway, your building footprint, your patio. The drawback here is it doesn't really speak to the Balkan scale. So recall that this dimensional standard, this section of code, is really trying to get to the aesthetics, the Balkan scale of the development in the subdivision. This doesn't shrink the size of the house quite as much. For example, I've shown you one hypothetical here. The hypothetical I showed you a moment ago, I'm going to go back up. You could look at a smaller driveway, have that house more closely located to the front, the street, and probably get closer to our impervious surface, our new impervious surface threshold. Does that make sense, what we're, what it would mean when we're talking about impervious surface as a dimensional standard, at least in general?
Okay.
This does not address, you used the word bulk, I think you used. So I could, for example, build up, right?
Right. In the R4, thank you, and thank you for the prompt. In the R4 zone and in the R6 zone, you can build up to 35 feet to the peak of the roof. That's measured, measured from the finished grade, which is the grade as it is once you've finished grading out your yard around the house. Most new homes have a flat yard or some kind of mid-lot break on their yard. Typically, 35 feet is enough for a three-story home, or a two-story home with like a daylight basement or a tuck under garage if it's a sloped lot. All right, I'm going to go on to the next one. So we also have a form in here, Form B, which looks just at changing our setbacks. The setbacks on a, on a standard lot in the R4, R6 zone would include a five-foot setback for your interior setbacks. Interior setbacks would be property lines, setbacks from property lines you share with a neighbor. So this would be anywhere where you can look over your fence and you can see another house, you have a five-foot setback from that property line. We also require 10-foot street setback in, by and large, all of the R4, R6, R8 zones. We're not proposing to change that tonight unless I hear otherwise from the commission. Whoop. So, in the setback world, we can have a house built effectively anywhere within that dashed line. There are some things that are subject to setbacks and some things that aren't. The house and things like a shed cannot be located in the setback. Pavement, so the patio and the driveway in this particular case, can go into the setbacks. And I'm, this is just a change that would affect setbacks, so in this scenario, we would be getting rid of the impervious surface allowance and just focusing on regulating Balkan scale based on setbacks alone. And the proposed change that you'll see in the Form B is to look at possibly increasing our interior setbacks up to as much as 10%, or pardon me, 10 feet from interior property lines. This would be a pretty significant change, especially in the platted lots. We would be creating a fair number of situations where homes would be grandfathered into the existing setback. And I can explain grandfathering more if, if need be. But the purpose of this particular graphic is to show you that it does certainly shrink the house. You end up with the shed needing to move in from the, the corner of the property. When you look at this from the street, you would see effectively 20 feet from house to house, house wall to house wall, because you'd see a 10-foot setback on each side of that property. On a 60-foot lot, so I've drawn these lots as a 60-foot dimension on this back property line here. Keep in mind, we're essentially saying you'd lose 20 feet out of that 60 feet for house area, moving, in this case, in plan view, north-south. Makes sense?
I hope I don't offend the artist. I'm not sure that's to scale, that, that interior setback looks closer to 15 feet.
The artist is horribly offended. Yes, and, and I, I hope it's clear, these, these drawings are simply illustrative. They're not intended to be accurate to that level of accuracy.
Yeah, and the only reason I bring that up aside to offend somebody is to just note that, that on a 60-foot wide lot, the, the setback's not going to be that large.
Right, right. I was matching it up with, was, with the 10-foot setback I had from the street, and did not have access to CAD when I was actually drawing this, so. All right, so that's, that's what Form B would represent in terms of a change to the actual regulation. Notice, again, in this regulation, we're not limiting the amount of patio you can put on the site, we're not limiting the size of the driveway. Theoretically, under this scenario, you could pave almost the whole site, and we're not going to run into a problem with a homeowner doing that, because setbacks don't affect your paving, putting in gravel, things of that nature. Okay? So, floor area ratio is the Form, I believe it's Form C in our packet tonight. Floor area ratio is not something we currently use for residential zoning designations in Smamish. We use it for our commercial zoning. What we've proposed here is a, a floor area ratio of .5 to 1, meaning that if you have a 6,000-square-foot lot, you can have a floor area that is essentially 50% of that 6,000-square-foot lot, which in this diagram would be six, pardon me, would be 3,000 square feet, and would result in a 3,000-square-foot footprint if we're talking about a single-story home. If we start looking at a two-story or three-story home, the footprint changes, and I'll show you a graphic to represent that in a second. The footprint for the two-story home, right? So 1,500-square-foot footprint, if you did just a true two-story home, 1,500 square feet on the first floor, 1,500 square feet on the second floor. Floor area ratios typically do not regulate ancillary structures. This is not living space, your shed is not a living space, so it's not going to be subject to the floor area ratio. Another nuance here is you can include the garage or not include the garage as you feel is appropriate. The way I've, I've set this set of graphics up in your initial form, it would include any finished space, so any gross floor area space, which would include the garage. Some people would argue we shouldn't include parking. So, this is a different graphic, right? I've tried to show this, if you took a slice through the center of the lot, this is more of an elevation view. So you have the property lines on either side. This would be what you would see if you were standing at the street. You have a 60-foot wide lot, five-foot setback on either side, this is the ground. Whoop, and I just went right past it. I'm clicking too fast. So again, this is a 3,000-square-foot home, built effectively to the setbacks, 3,000-square-foot on the property lines, pardon me. square foot on the property lines, pardon me, with a single story. So you see a fairly large building if you're standing on the street. But the next version of this would be on a 3,000 square foot home on a two-story building, you have effectively half of that area, 1,500 square feet, hitting the ground, and presumably two stories, so you can get a sense of what that might look like. Another version, you don't necessarily have to have each story be the same size, but you would start to see a wedding cake type approach. Third version, three-story home, because we can see three-story homes in SMAMISH. I drew this one again in the wedding cake approach. One thing to just keep in mind, sheds, again, don't make a difference when we're talking about floor area. Okay? So the shed is not going to necessarily become less prominent. The last form, I think it was D, was related to lot coverage. What we've proposed here, lot coverage, of course, is related to buildings. Buildings are structures which are permanently placed on, in or on the ground that have a roof. So buildings include both the house and the shed. In this case, if we did a 35% lot coverage, the total house and shed footprint can't exceed 2,100 square feet. Things that would not count towards your lot coverage would be things like the driveway, the patio, uncovered decks. I added that one in just for fun. So, does that make sense as far as what the various policy options are for us to move forward, based on our conversation at least last time? And I guess my suggestion to the planning commission is that we probably want to first decide which dimensional standard we think might be the right fit for these zoning designations, and then talk about the particulars of how that standard might be set up. So I put in some, some very generic kind of basic numbers based on what other cities in our area have done. That's where I got 35% for example, for lot coverage. But before we get to that, we probably should figure out, do we want to talk about impervious surface, setbacks, floor area ratio, or FAR, or lot coverage? And then second, what types of particulars does the planning commission want to see in the draft regulation?
Before we do your, your two things, I want to do my thing, which is see if anybody has any questions related to Evan's presentation or any of the terms, forms?
I have one, and that was, I think I heard you mention gravel. So we're, if we're talking about impervious surfaces, then we could also talk about pervious surfaces like rubberized asphalt and, what is it, hempcrete? Or is that the correct?
Percocrete, maybe, yeah.
Okay. Anyway, putting hemp and concrete together. And that would, those kind of building possibilities would help the developer, the owner, reduce the impervious surfaces.
They would. They don't get to the Balkan dimensional, the Balkan aesthetic that this chapter is specifically trying to address. And that, that was part of the problem statement I brought to you on November 5th. We have things like pervious concretes or, or grasscrete, or whatever the version you might want to think of, gravel, which we regulate or don't regulate when we're talking about impervious surface right now, based upon what the drainage manual considers it. So if crushed rock is considered impervious, because when you drive on it or you walk on it enough, it tends to compact down to a point where water doesn't penetrate it. If I'm thinking of that in the context of a bulk or dimensional standard or an aesthetic standard, it doesn't necessarily make sense to worry about crushed rock. It certainly does from a drainage standpoint, and we're not changing our drainage regulations or our critical area regulations for drainage. So, what this would do is it would de-emphasize the use of those types of techniques to address our, our bulk or dimensional requirements. You still might want to include them for other reasons in a subdivision related to drainage control and complying with the new manuals.
Thank you for that, Evan. Does that clarify?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? So yeah, what I'd like to do now is maybe just starting from my left, have everybody express their preferred policy direction, and you know, it could be one, it could be two together. For instance, it can be maybe building coverage and impervious coverage. It could be a hybrid of something, but let's try and get a sense of where the planning commission is.
So how are we going to refer to them, I guess, first of all?
We all have a policy form. So, so for instance, you know, I might say, well, I prefer Policy Option A, which is looking at reducing impervious surface. That's just an example of saying that. So, Larry, I'm going to put you on the spot.
Okay. Well, I think the staff has made it pretty easy to say some of the things, because the term grandfather really helps when you look at it. And just sitting here on, first, when I made my notes a few days ago, my main concern was pervious. Yeah, and you've explained that. So I guess I like probably a hybrid between Form A on the bulk, and then on Form Two or Form B, the setbacks, because the setbacks are encouraging, I guess, better use of the land that isn't built over. Okay, so I guess I'd go with combination of A and B.
Yeah, I'm not certain which ones I would go with. I sort of know that I wouldn't go with the floor area ratio. Okay. I would say it would have to be a hybrid of.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I had not moved my mic. I said I was, I'm uncomfortable in going with the floor area ratio, and I think that it would have to be a hybrid, or, and I'm not, I'm not certain, I don't have an opinion yet, on the impervious surfaces in combination with the setbacks and possibly the lot coverage also.
Appreciate that, pointing out which ones you don't like.
It's easier.
Sure. It's a path of least resistance. Okay.
I know I don't like broccoli ice cream, everything else.
You know, my, when I was thinking about this, the thing that really struck me is the appropriate tool in limiting bulk, which is again, how you perceive a structure from a street, was the setback, which is a option B. To me, that's the one I think for us should get the most attention. I would, I do think there are some other things we need to consider in addition to that as well.
So, I also just, I'm kind of going on this visually at this point. It's not really my constituency of this, of this stuff, and I'm kind of curious if there are constituencies for doing these different options. Like, do the planners really like one over the other? Does one make their job easier? Does one actually have a, a larger environmental impact over the others? You know, I'm guessing that impervious surfaces probably has the most environmental impact, but they all sort of do at some level. So, I'm kind of at a loss to choose, but I do think that impervious surfaces and setbacks seem to give you a good set of tools for regulating. So I'm pretty comfortable with going with that. The other ones, I don't know what their constituencies are, like who is promoting that? FAR sounds like, very much like trying to fit a commercial tool into a residential setting, is the way I feel about it, but not necessarily a bad thing. There might be some reasons for that, but I don't know what the constituency is for. It's like, is someone really chomping at the bit to do that? I don't know why our master builders aren't in the room for this conversation, because this seems to really impact them, you know? So, I'm kind of curious about why these other ones are presented as options at all in terms of their applicability over the other ones. So some qualitative discussion maybe, so.
So between A and B, Frank, is there one you think should more focus than the other?
No, I think some, I think some sort of combination of the two, probably. Individually, they all sort of felt like unintended consequences or something, you know? I'm not really sure what the, and so that's why I'm kind of leaning towards a hybrid that lets us actually attack things with a couple of different tools. That's kind of what I'm leaning towards at this point. I don't think individually, any one of them solves all the problems that we're trying to get to here, so.
I agree with Commissioner Blau and Commissioner Crandall. And Ryan, did you speak? No, I can't remember what yours was.
Really?
I'm sorry. That's embarrassing for me, I'm sorry. But anyway.
Let's make this.
Well, setbacks, setbacks was your most important one. Sorry.
My focus is on setbacks.
Okay, so I agree with you also. But I agree with more of the combination of the impervious surface and the setbacks, because I think we do need to pay attention to the environmental impacts. We don't want to completely drop that, I feel. And maybe not, maybe the setbacks not as much as they've suggested in the memo. Maybe we, maybe make them a little bit smaller than that. But I think a combination would be good.
Do you mind if I throw a couple of thoughts out for the planning commissions?
Before you do, I'm interested in your, in an answer to Frank's question, which is, which one do you guys like?
Yeah. I don't know that, that I can speak certainly for the city staff. There are, there are traditionally four or five ways of regulating this type of question, which are the, I've shown you four. The fifth is to really go to performance standards on building design, and that involves design review, and I, I don't think that's really the right tool for this exercise, so I didn't even put it into your, your scope on this one. FAR, I mean, I can certainly understand why this is not the attractive option for this, the planning commission. None of you liked it, and so we'll drop that off the discussion. If the goal is to talk about Balkan aesthetics, and recall, we have a King County Surface Water Design Manual and a critical area, set of critical area regulations, and a whole slew of documents that regulate impervious surface for drainage. I have to admit, I don't always think of crushed rock, or paved asphalt, or the patio in the backyard, as really affecting the bulk that the, the house might have at the street, or to the neighbor next door. So, that's why I thought maybe lot coverage or setbacks would be of interest in our conversation. And what I hear from the planning commission is certainly setbacks, and maybe keeping some of that impervious surface, but looking at the mix. And so that is keeping us more or less with the same set of tools we have right now, but it's getting us to relook at the mix of those tools. Impervious surface, for the planning commissions, just so you're aware, the, the impervious surface allowances we have on the R4 and R6 zoning designations are much higher than what you would expect in other, other jurisdictions on the east side. And I have to say, some of our subdivisions have taken advantage of that fact. And you'll see a house or, or a house in combination with drive and patio, where we're at that 70% impervious surface. I'm not sure that's a good thing or a bad thing. What it does do is you tend to see a, a larger house relative to the lot size. One of the classic ways of trying to regulate that is through lot coverage, where you just focus on the size of the building compared to the size of the lot, in terms of footprint of building on, on size of lot. Right. Last thing I'll say, and I'll turn it back for your, your deliberations. One thing we could look at with setbacks is certainly like a stair stepping type approach. So first story might have a setback of X, second story might have a setback of X plus five. That might be a way of, it's kind of the classic wedding cake approach. It again speaks to bulk when you're standing at the street, where you're starting to see a house that kind of moves in on itself as you get to a second or third story. And we can do that from the street setback as well.
It also, that would also limit some of the things that I've seen that are so unattractive, which is these large box houses, like the ones along 228 there, approximately the middle school. They're just, you know, and there's five of them right, right in a row. It's like, and I think that's what we're really trying to discourage here, is that sort of, you know.
So the, the lot coverage tool and the FAR tool are the tools that target the building most directly, just to make sure that's clear. The lot coverage tool really says, you can't cover more than a percentage of the lot, and you have to meet setbacks typically. The FAR says essentially, your floor can't exceed a certain ratio, given the size of the lot, which means that when you're looking at multi-story buildings, the building is narrower and taller versus kind of fat and wide in short.
So I, there's definitely consensus from the commission that the FAR is not one that we want to consider. I do want to spend a little bit more time talking about the, the lot coverage, because I didn't feel like we got a lot of information from you, and Evan, don't, don't take that as a, as a dig. But as I was thinking about it, I was like, wow, we just, we just sort of really kind of glossed over that. And I think, I think you're right. I think there, there may be some merit in, in considering that as one of the options in addition to setbacks. I mean, everybody has looked, has said, yeah, we want to look at impervious, we want to look at setbacks. And traditionally, the way I've seen it in, in other jurisdictions where I've done work is you have a, a building coverage limitation, which again, is just the building footprint. So you're not limiting the square footage of the house, but you're limiting how big that footprint can be. And then you have an additional allowance for impervious surface, which could be driveways or patio or a deck or, or something else, which, you know, I think, I think there's been a real strong trend towards outdoor living spaces, and people want to be able to enjoy the outdoors, even in a time like this, when it's maybe a little bit rainy, so they want it covered. So it's not building, but it's an impervious surface.
And I, I think Commissioner Cheryan brought up the idea of combining A, B, and D, and certainly we can, we can go that route. That's, I, that's a, I can think of at least Isakua, I think, uses that approach, and I believe Redmond may as well, at least in some of their residential zones. That may get to reducing the amount of grandfathering or non-conformances we're creating as part of this exercise, too. If we leave the impervious surface maybe generally alone, or reduce it modestly, but then really focus in on lot coverage and possibly setbacks. So I'll remind the commission, in the shoreline master program, for your shoreline jurisdictions, we have a standard that says that for your interior setbacks, and this is really geared towards what I'll call side yards right now, not your backyard so much, your total interior setback has to be at least a percentage of the width of the lot and no less than five feet. So on a 60-foot lot here, we might do, say your, your setback has to be at least 25% of the width of the lot and no less than five feet. And what that would do is one side would certainly be a five-foot setback. The other side would be, or likely would be a five-foot setback. And on the other side, you might see a slightly larger side yard. You're still going to create some grandfathering situation using that type of approach, but what it does do from the street is it creates a little less of the, every house is exactly 10 feet apart as you're moving down the street, and you kind of get some houses that are 10 feet apart, some might be 20 feet apart, and you get a little bit more variation as you move up and down a street frontage. And then that combined with your lot coverage, I think, may really begin to affect some of your, your house design.
And these standards affect single-family homes, right? But when someone is planning a larger development, subdivision of some sort, right? Aren't they looking at all these things working together also? Like, I'm doing five houses, so now I need to look at, okay, five, 10, 15, 20 feet, you know, it's like, and that has impact. know, it's like, and that has impact, the same aesthetic bulk impact also, even though they may be in compliance, you're still getting a cookie cutter look, which is what we're trying to get away from here, you know? And I don't know how that applies to this, you know, like when someone applies for a subdivision, do you look at each lot individually, or do you look at the subdivision as a whole in terms of these standards? Or how does that, am I being too vague here?
No, there's a couple, couple of questions I think you have packed into there, Commissioner. If, if I may, I'll try and unpack them a little bit. When the, when a subdivision comes in the door, they, they being the developer typically have a specific type of house product they would like to locate on those lots. And so typically, in the R4 or R6 zoning designations, you'll see a lot size with a width somewhere between maybe at the low end, 45 feet, more commonly somewhere between 50 and 60 feet, which means that, and they know we have a five-foot setback off our shared lines, which means we're looking at house products that are designed to be somewhere around 40, 45 feet wide, and a certain depth. What I think you'll start to see, if you, if you incorporate, for example, the setback approach I just described, you'll see the development community shift to potentially a different, a set of different sized lots to accommodate some of that different housing product. And you'll start to see, you know, typically on a subdivision like this, you'll see maybe five or six, or a few more housing types that they'll build, and they'll, they'll tend to rotate it as you go down the street, but it's, you know, on 120 lots, it's five or six homes 120 times. What I think you'll start to see is a little bit more variability in how that house is placed on the lot. And that, I think when you combine that with landscaping, I think it begins to create a little bit more visual interest on these properties. Don't get me wrong, I'm not talking about design standards and things that would really make this the most creative residential neighborhood in the, in the world. I don't think that's really the target we're aiming for today. But this does begin to create less of a bulk appearance. I can think of a couple of subdivisions that are kind of like what you described earlier, where it's, every house is built up to that five-foot setback. They're very square, and they're very, you know, blocky and right there. And, you know, this, this creates a little bit more variability. It's not going to be a ton, but it's more.
Does it impact cost? You know, I mean, I don't want to go off on, on a tangent there, but I mean, we're talking about affordability as a metric also, and does that additional variability raise the cost by an, an amount that we can quantify? It would go, be counter to our intentions of having affordable housing on the plateau?
We're not seeing market rate affordable housing built now, just to be direct about it. Most of our market rate is at, at least 110 or more of median income in, in King County. So I, I appreciate the affordability goal. It, it certainly affects cost. Let me also say that. This will affect the cost of homes and, and cost to the developer, which is passed on to the home buyer. That's just market reality. But I don't think it's a true statement to say that that cost is working counter to our affordable housing, because the market's not building affordable housing in Smamish anyways, with the exception of Town Center where it's essentially mandated or heavily incentivized.
So if I were to say the inverse of what Frank said is that if, depending on the outcome of what this discussion is, let's say, let's just say for the sake of discussion, interior setbacks are doubled. Now we've got 10-foot interior setbacks, so basically 10 feet all around. You will definitely see an uptick in the cost of housing because it, now the, an applicant has to buy that much more land to get their product, or conversely, they're using more land but getting less housing. So there's, this comes back to, and we've talked about this a little bit before, about the efficiency of land use, and, you know, there, there's a balance in there somewhere of the efficiency of using land efficiently, but still attaining a vision that I think people would like to see changed.
And then the other question I would have in line with sort of looking in more vision stuff also is the question of density, you know? Does this create homes that are less dense? That is, capable of housing less people? I mean, obviously a smaller house, less people, right? That's kind of a fact of life here. And, and how are we impacting that by looking at these standards?
I think you could expect some effect to density. Most, quantifying that is, is a very hard thing for me to do in, in a way that's meaningful beyond the qualitative statements. Most subdivisions I review right now, and to give you a sense of this, I'm talking about the big subdivisions, Camp subdivision or Highcroft at Smamish, which was just recorded 120 lots, working with the Connor Jarvis subdivision, which is I think 115 lots. They are not building as much density on those projects as they could. They could have fit, they could have squeezed more lots in because they're really looking at building a specific housing product to sell in Smamish. I think Ryan, or Commissioner Coleman's correct, that if we change how that product fits on a lot, you could see some developers go down the route of building even fewer lots to try and keep selling that same product. And you may see some who will take the other approach, redesign which product they want to put on in an individual lot, and keep building roughly the same density. And I, I can almost guarantee this is going to be based upon their market analysis of what they think will sell best in Smamish. I'm not sure I would go with your statement a moment ago about smaller home equals fewer people. The, the house size in Smamish over time has been increasing, so most new single-family homes roughly in the 45 to 5,000 square foot range. I think there's a lot of single-family homes in Smamish that were built a few years ago that are roughly 22 to 2,500 square feet. I'm not sure you'd really see a discrepancy in family size from one to another. I think you'd see instead kind of a, a difference in finish quality and maybe sale price and in other aspects, construction quality perhaps.
I, I would say anecdotally, Evan, that I have heard, at least in, in this market area up here, that there are, there are more house plans that are catering to a multi-generational household. So you've got, you know, not, not just your typical parents and kids, so that would be like a two-generation household, but grandparents as well. And so those types of things are being factored in, which I think also explains their, our ballooning house sizes altogether. I, I don't think there's much that we can do to affect that with, with any of these bulk standards. I think builders will continue to build and sell successfully, and what we need to do is think about the best tools to, to bring a, something, I can't speak anymore.
Okay. Not to, to channel ex-Commissioner Crass, but you know, I question, what, what problem are we trying to solve here? You know, and if, and I don't think we're trying to solve affordability here. We're not trying to solve, you know, this isn't the, this isn't the tool for that. Just something I'm, I think about, you know?
One last thought, if I may, Commissioner Blau. If the concern is density and the effect this has on density, unlike many jurisdictions, we don't establish a minimum density for our subdivisions. So certainly, historically, King County had a minimum density, said, if you have a, a piece of ground that could theoretically hold 100 homes, you had to build at least 85 on a site like that. That would affect lot yield and, and things like supply and maybe affordability as much as what we're talking about tonight. To your point, I am going to draw us back to our scope a little bit, which I think is really bulk and aesthetics more than affordability and densities.
Just quickly, and thank you, Evan, because I'm looking at the clock also, and I appreciate what the chair said on efficient use and what people want to see the, the city of Smamish look like. And it came to my mind, we also want to have an effective use of land, and that fits into the vision. Both the efficient and effective are a little bit different, and I think combining those two together might be good. And then the, a quick question, because I was listening when you were, Evan, when you were going over lot coverage, somehow overhang like eaves came to mind. Did you mention, is that counted, or is it, it says footprint, but are eaves part of that footprint?
You could, you can set it up either way.
Okay.
For impervious surface, they're counted right now. The structural eaves, the gutters are not. And that's just historically how we've set it up. But no, this is one of those things where, what I'm taking away from a conversation right now is I should look at a combination of language based on forms A, B, and D. I, I think the next question I have really for the commission is, do you want me to essentially come back with a, a raw proposal to you, or do you have any thoughts about the amount of reduction of impervious surface, or setbacks, or lot coverage that I should put together for your consideration in January? And how should we define eaves?
I think I personally need a little bit more input before I know the numbers. I feel like I'd just be kind of guessing at this point, going from five feet to 10 feet. I don't know. I would ask a builder, what does that mean to you? You know, what does that mean from a practical standpoint? Is that something that ruins your business? Or is that something that, that really makes things easier to, to work with? I mean, what do we, what's our impact here?
So I, I would encourage us not to think about the developer's bottom line. I don't, I don't think that's how we should be guiding policy in our city. I think, again, this is a character issue. If we want to think about character, the visual, the vision, to, to borrow from Commissioner Crandall over here, you know, personally, when I think about at least the interior set, the interior setback, I think about it as the space between two structures. And I look at that 10 feet, and I look at a house that, you know, is ranging from, you know, at, at least up to the top sill plate is going to be about 22 feet, and I go, man, that just feels a little tight. You know, when you think about the proportion of that area and the height of that structure, because the, the roof tends to sort of start to go away, you know? Once, once you get to that point, it's, it's going, you know, it's diminishing back in, in size. And so to me, it feels like at least the interior, you know, side to side needs to be just a skosh larger. You know, and personally, I really think the rear yard setback needs to be something a little bit more usable. I've, I've seen projects go up in the city where houses have literally been built setback to setback, and I just think to myself, well, I'll keep that to myself. So, I mean, that, that would be my feedback to staff, and I would welcome, if anybody else has a strong encouragement one way or the other to, please speak up.
Evan, question, so Isakua Highlands, what's the typical setback there for those houses? Because they seem like they are jammed right next to each other.
You know, the, the gentleman sitting to your right is probably more qualified to answer that question than I am. Chair, do you want to take a crack at that?
So those setbacks started off as five feet, and then about three years in, they were reduced to four. So those structures are eight feet apart. And in some cases, you could still allow, or a builder could still acquire an additional 12-inch projection into that setback. So literally six feet between structures.
I hope you like your neighbors.
So I, I think it's pretty clear, we don't want that kind of a, or at least I do not want that kind of a.
Our, our minimum setback almost entirely across the city is five feet. I would encourage the planning commission to think about maybe a, some version of a larger setback. I heard the chair advocate for a larger backyard setback, or there's maybe a couple of creative ideas I'll throw out for your consideration on the, on the 14th around that. What about the percentage of the lot width as an aspect here? That was one we used for the Shoreline Master Program. If we did something like 20% of the lot width on this example, one setback would be, you know, you'd have to have a combined interior setback of 12 feet. One setback could be five, the other would be seven, or you could do six and six, or some version thereof.
How is that different from just dictating that the setbacks have to have this minimum threshold?
It, it gives a little bit of variability to the builder as you're moving down the street. So one of the things about, to me, about this is you see a very uniform setback repeated. And that, that to me is almost as visually present as the separation Commissioner Coleman was describing a moment ago of kind of the canyon effect, you might call it, between two homes with a, a wall height of 20 feet on either side. If you have a little bit of variation in there, you can maybe get a little bit better breakup in the line of homes.
Okay. So it's about variability between setbacks?
I think that goes to, in part.
Okay.
Bulk and aesthetics, yeah.
How, how can you regulate that, though? Can you say, like, say two of the homes are built at one level, can you say the next two have to be different than that? I mean, how can you regulate that variability?
I, this is a home-by-home evaluation.
Okay.
So it is entirely possible you could set up a pattern where every home on the south property line would have a five-foot setback, and every home on the north property line would have a seven-foot setback. So you'll still have some potential for a, a repeating pattern. Like I said, these aren't perfect solutions. We could also look at, as I mentioned before, increasing setbacks as we go up a story. So you could have a, a regulation that said that you have a five-foot setback for the first story, and then the second story, at least one side of the building had to be at least 10 feet or 15 feet from the side property line. It addresses that canyon effect Commissioner Coleman was referring to a few minutes ago on some of those lots. It's not going to do it on every one.
So I'm, I'm getting a sense, it's almost 8:30, and there, there isn't a really strong desire about the best tools to, to consider in terms of setback and, and the other two features that we've been discussing. So I'm, I'm thinking at this point that we should probably maybe stop this discussion at this point and, and ask staff to come up with a number of different solutions and go from there.
Okay. Chair, can I bring up one other item then, if, if that's the approach we'd like to take? I, and I apologize for hijacking your, your soliloquy there. The, we have as our next meeting a public hearing scheduled, and to really give you options, I would have to draft code and release that right around the start of January. My impression is that we're not far enough along in our policy discussion for me to effectively draft code for you. Is that, so I'm wondering if I should push our planning commission's public hearing to the 21st and then have the 28th as a deliberation meeting?
Well, let's take a look at our work program calendar.
Yeah, I think, what else are you throwing at us?
Because commissioners may have seen on, on some email correspondence a little while ago that our meetings have shifted in January. Originally, we were scheduled for the 17th and 21st, and with an added date in there that was unknown, at least at the last meeting. And since then, at least now on the work program calendar, we've got three meetings. The first one shifted to the 14th, the 21st was kept, and then January 28th as a tentative if needed. I guess I'm a little concerned about if we're still having discussions on the 14th, how we could appropriately notice and get material out for a public hearing the following week. Sorry. Want to noodle that one? But I agree with you, I don't, I don't think we've established a solid enough of a foundation to be able to get you to a point where we can really consider code on the 14th.
So I, I think one of the staff goals is to try and keep the same planning commission throughout the deliberation process. And that, that's why I've been pushing on January a little bit. I'm certainly willing to put together material for January 7th, so that we can have a, if we can go back to that, I know I've pulled that off your calendar so far, but if we could have maybe a discussion on, a work session on January 7th, and then follow-up could have maybe a discussion on, a work session on January 7th, and then follow up with a public hearing deliberation on the 21st, I think a two-week turnaround is probably, you're right, the minimum of what we would need to get to that public hearing.
And you would take the 14th off, or we're just going to add in the 7th?
Well, the 14th is currently already scheduled for your deliberations on that residential zoning designation and compatibility for non-residential uses or other land uses. Pardon me, I said it wrong again.
Adding a meeting in January, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I don't think we need really more than three meetings. It's the Thursdays that we pick that I'm struggling with a little bit.
I guess I'd vote for keep moving towards, away from the holiday, or whatever that first of the year is called, you know? And go on the 14th, 21st, and 28th. That'd be my preference.
The other version I can throw out, just for the Planning Commission to consider, if we're willing to maybe do one later night towards the end of the month, we could maybe keep with the 14th and the 28th, and then the 28th would be your potential later night.
Bring us more coffee?
Yeah, we'd have the public hearing, and then I'd ask you to do your deliberations after that.
You're beginning to sound like Cameron.
Oh.
Ooh, snap.
No, you'd have to talk far more to be like Cameron, Evan.
Efficiency.
I'm fine with going a little later if we have to. I'd actually rather go a little later than actually have another meeting, to be honest. Once I'm here, I'm here. You know, I could be here another hour, I don't care.
I second that.
Here.
Okay.
We have consensus.
So right now, we're thinking perhaps the 14th and the 28th, and I'm going to ask you to do your deliberations on the dimensional standards on the 28th. And I'll try and get you more information, so I'll probably put together some faux draft code and a couple of different options.
To scale, this time?
Depends on how much time I have with the graphics. For you to consider, using a combination of forms A, B, and D. Does that sound right? All right.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so unless there's any other questions or comments, I think that brings us to the end of, where's my agenda? To the end of our discussion on dimensional standards for single-family homes.
And, oh, look at that, review of work program calendar, too.
We just did it.
Brings us to our last public comment for, again, the discussion on dimensional standards.
Paul Stickney at 504 over 228 Ave., Southeast. Just got a couple of comments. I agree about setting aside which of the tools approaches. I completely agree. Here are some things I'd suggest you add in to the mix. I suggest you factor in ADU ordinances and how they would apply to these impervious surfaces, because the city does have an ordinance about allowing ADU in certain zones, so I would just add that in to the mix. Something I've seen in a lot of cities over the years, which I like, is one side yard setback, five, one side yard setback, maybe twice that, you know, 10, or an average of 15. I've seen some cities do either or, so long as the cumulative total of the two sides is a certain thing. I just investigate that. And that seems to work, because it helps people fit their specific needs, especially over time, and looks good. I think Kirkland does that, and Easton and West of Market, that's looked nice over time. A couple of questions and statements combined, is, are these regulations for new only, or would they be applying retroactive over all houses? I think they would be applying over everyone. So the question is, is if somebody wanted to come in and remodel an existing house, how does that remodel fit with new regulations compared to what they had on their house already? And then I've got an interesting question. What if a house burns down? Can they go back to where they were? Or do they have to start with the, it's one thing to be grandfathered and remodeled, it's another if a house is, you know, somehow, you know, harmed or damaged or burns down. So anyway, I only wanted to add a few of these topics into this that I think would be basically appropriate to consider in these regulations and that you're talking about. So, that's it.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else like to provide us with public comment? No? Would you like to respond to Mr. Stickney's questions? Well, just two quick thoughts. I certainly will include an option, if that's okay with the Planning Commission, that addresses the ADU scenario, just for completeness. On the grandfathering question, or the legally established non-conforming question, I'll include some background material for your January 14 meeting, describing how that's handled in Smamish currently, and I think we'll address both of Mr. Stickney's questions there as well.
Grandfathering as well as replacing a damaged structure?
We effectively treat them the same, and I'm happy to explain it in more detail another day. I like that idea.
Actually, one last. I like the suggestion of the cumulative. You know, you can have five on one side, or you can have 10 on the other, et cetera. Is that something that we, is within our disposal to do, Evan?
Yes, I think I'll include that as one of the setback options for you to consider. And again, what I'm anticipating for the 14th is a bit of a mix and match. You'll see a couple of different documents from me. So right now, I'm thinking of a cover memo, some background documentation around grandfathering, probably some revised evaluation forms down to one, and then a couple of different options for code language, and a couple of different graphics for illustration purposes.
I think 15 is too wide, but.
Not on each side.
No, 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 just in total. Anyhow, okay, any other comments or questions?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're adjourned at 8:39.